After the record meeting, we'll hold an executive session, so I'd like for the commissioners to stay around for that, please. Happy New Year. We're so glad to be moving into 2017. Please silence your phones and anything that makes a noise. And if you would, stand for the invocation and the pledge. Father God, we're so thankful, Lord, for all the things that you did for us in 2016. We're seeing the fruition of the four-lane and of 331 and the other things, Lord, that we petitioned you for. And 2017 is a new year, an exciting year for Walden County. Father God, I thank you that we're going to see new jobs come in. We're going to see the water and sewer on 331. Lord, you're even going ahead of us to Tallahassee and giving favor with the legislators so that when we take this issue before them, they'll be open and ready, Lord, to help us with this issue. We thank you, God, for wisdom and guidance as we move forward at the table today. And all these things, in Jesus's name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Recognition of guests. Mr. Chairman?
Jeff. Stand, please. Yeah, you.
On the front row.
Today's Jeff's birthday. Happy birthday, Jeff. Thank you.
And since he brought it up, if you want to lead us in the birthday song?
No.
Officially call this meeting to order. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would request to remove item nine under the consent agenda. That is the proposed contract for Tri-County. There's some language in that contract we need to do a little more work on, so we would respectfully ask that be removed from consideration for today.
Okay.
Motion to approve the additions and deletions.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Under public comments, if you have to leave early and you can't be here for your agenda item, you can come forward now. When you come up, if you would state your name, spell your last name, and also tell us what item on the agenda that you'll be speaking to. You can either give us the number or the agenda item. Anyone from the public that would like to speak now. Mr. Osborne.
For the record, my name's Alan Osborne, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number Four. You're scheduled today to schedule an NOPC. I don't think you should do it.
Alan, 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 excuse me. Would you start us time over, but spell your last name for the court order.
O-S-V-O-R-N-E.
Thank you. Now you fill out with your three minutes.
Item Number Four, you're looking at scheduling a meeting to hold an NOPC, and I don't think you should. At the Planning Commission, I don't think it was done correctly. We tried to protest the notice. They said they had an affidavit that said it was good, so I brought this today. Couldn't do it. Going for the clerk. Let me read it first, since she's going to keep it. This is a copy of a certified mail envelope. It shows that it has a stamp on it that was bought from a contract stamp company. And it shows that this batch of notices was clearly sitting in Pensacola on December 11th of 2016, which means that nobody in that batch could have gotten proper notice for this hearing. So if it was in Pensacola, it could not be in the possession of the people who would like to come attend that meeting. There's the tracking number. If you look this up online on your phone if you want to verify. And then here's the tracking number. I'll let him show you in the upper corner, same tracking number. Come on down here. And then you'll see that December 11th going up. Where's it at? Pensacola. I think the intent of this was disingenuous at best. To send something at 8:20 PM and think it could be there the next morning, and be in the possession of people who were required to notice by your code is wrong, especially on Christmas week, the busiest week of the post office all year. This information was in the applicant's hand when he gave it to the county at the request and when he wanted to have the hearing. How do you expect us, and at the last hearing, we had, I don't know, we had forty-eight or nine experts, and it was standing room only. At the Planning Commission this time, there was only about thirty people, and many of them said that their neighbors had not gotten notice yet. Also, the notice had no application for changes in Driftwood. This commission said it wouldn't take another NOPC that didn't apply for that for five or six years. There was no way for me to get my experts all there, and I think it disingenuous that you take the recommendations of a commission when people were not properly noticed and did not have time to respond. That evidence, I think, is irrefutable. And should you choose to have a hearing, I think it would be in folly to spend the tax mayor's money, because it's probably a good bet somebody's going to file suit on this, when all you have to do is look yourself online and see that we didn't have it. Why would you spend money on lawsuits? This ought to be a punt, and the applicant ought to have to go back and get proper notice again.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Anyone else? Ms. Harris. This means that you're not going to be able to stay for your item on the agenda?
I don't know if I can stay or not, because I have my phone and I'm waiting on my offer for a problem. So I might and I might not. My name is S-U-Z-A-N-N-E Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. I have a question about Alan's.
What number now are you speaking to on the?
On Alan Osborne's.
Thank you.
Don't you all send those out, return receipt requests?
We don't send them out. The applicants send them out.
Return receipt requests?
Certified mail.
Certified mail. So they have to sign for certified mail?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Did you have an affidavit saying that they were done?
Yes.
Who is the affidavit signed by? Nobody?
I just know they said at the Planning Commission meeting that there was an affidavit delivered.
But nobody knew who signed it?
I didn't see it, I know.
Okay. I'd like to have a copy of the affidavit that was signed. This is my public record request.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Anyone else? Do we have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
For further discussion, no.
Any items? No. Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Shall move.
Second. Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Approval of the EALs excluding the Waste Management expenditures.
Madam Chair, I file the necessary form with the court as a conflict of interest and will not vote in this process. Thank you.
You have a motion?
This is for the Waste Management EAL approval.
Do we have a motion for approval of the Waste Management Agenda, Waste Management Expenditure approvals? I'm Rusty from the Holidays.
I make so a motion.
Motion second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the first item for your consideration is for request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the partnership agreement with Walton Skates for the fundraising, design, construction, and maintenance of a skate park at Helen McCall Park. If you recall, some funds have been allocated from the D5 recreational plant fee, a total of $60,000. Walton Skates is a private nonprofit organization that agreed to participate in that project. This agreement allows us to work cooperatively with them and receive funds that they would raise. And I believe they have a representative here today that may want to make a statement. But your approval of this would let us work together with this organization to build and maintain this skate park facility.
Ms. Cross, you may come forward.
Thanks, Council. It's John Cross, J-O-H-N-C-R-O-S-S. I just wanted to express our gratitude in the community for y'all to work with us on getting this public skate park built. This agreement helps formalize that, and we look forward to working with all of you moving forward. As part of the agreement, we have a check for the first $30,000, and I have a ceremonial check here if I'd like to present you guys.
Would y'all make a move? Receive the check, please.
And I brought a few kids from the community to be involved in this, so.
We need a motion and a second to approve that, please.
A motion? Second. All in favor? Aye. Any comments from the audience? Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. We need a motion and a second to approve that, please.
I make a motion, we accept.
A motion? Second. All in favor? Aye. Any comments from the audience? Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request for your approval of meeting dates for the customary use committee. When we submitted this item for the agenda, we were awaiting dates from the facilitator that he was available to meet with the committee, and we didn't have them when we prepared the agenda. But we know that moving this process along was important from a timeliness standpoint. We have confirmed that the facilitator is available Mondays and Wednesdays through the month of January. I sent you an email, I believe it was Friday, regarding some potential dates, being January 23rd and 30th for meeting dates, with a suggestion of the 9th of January for an organizational meeting. We've received some feedback, even from a committee member, that the 9th is probably not a good date, so we would suggest moving that back to possibly the 15th. Those dates are at your discretion, so we'll take your direction on setting those meeting dates.
And Commissioners, just one further note. I talked to Mr. McNeil on Friday, and he will have us a contract for your approval on the 10th. He ran out of staff over the weekend, obviously, and couldn't get it to us, so we'll have it by January 10th.
Maybe the 16th. 16th. Yeah. At 16th. At least I got the month right. I think I said September.
Please, your pleasure, board.
Okay. We go ahead and make a motion, and then we said that January 16th is an organizational meeting. Do we need to set a time specific?
Yes, sir.
What, have we got a feedback from anybody?
Any time during the day, but it'd probably be better to do it around 5:00.
I would think, okay. January 23rd and 30th at 5:00 PM for a regular meetings. Will the committee in January 16th at 5:00 PM for organizational meeting, and these to take place at the annex across the bay?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any comments from the audience? See none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the site conceptual plan and to move forward with the preliminary design and permitting for the new transfer station at Landville. We, Jones Edmonds, has done a good job of presenting some options, and I know staff has met with each of you to move that project forward. This is the next step into getting the thing built over a period of time, but this action would accept the conceptual site plan and engage Jones Edmonds to move forward with the design permitting of that new facility.
Now, has this, hasn't this been, the money been set aside for this already?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept.
A motion, do we have a second? Second. Any comments from the audience? Okay. See none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign? Aye. Your pleasure.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to award and approve and authorize the chair to sign contract for RFP 016-03838 for our health insurance consulting service with combined insurance services. Sureware Combined has been fulfilling that role for a few years now. Their contract was up. We did extend a request for proposals. Their proposal came in as a top-rated one, and we recommend we reengage them for their services.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any comments from the audience? See none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign?
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 016-031 for the 38 corridor intermodal strategic mobility and transportation feasibility study with Dewberry Preble Risk. These are the funds that were allocated through the legislative process in the last legislative session to provide for the initial phases of this intermodal strategic feasibility study. We went through the RFP process. Preble Risk was the top selected or qualified firm. We approved that at the last meeting, and this is the contract for them to move forward with work and the scope of services spelled out.
Questions from board?
I make a motion, we accept this.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments from the audience? Yes, come up, please.
Celeste Cobeena, C-O-B-E-N-A. I have some issues with the study that I think is going to be used as the template for this, the 38 Mobility Project, which I think was done by the Seaside Institute. There's a couple of ideas and concepts in here that I think need to be eliminated from this study, and that's the idea that public lands, the conservation lands of Greaton Beach State Park and Point Washington State Forest will be used as transportation corridors and parking lots for private individuals and businesses for employee parking, or whether it's tourist parking. That is not why these lands were purchased, and I think it's, you know, the county has gotten involved before with trying to use public lands for other purposes than which the land was acquired, and it's never worked out well. And I have to say, I was delighted and pleased to see that when the county started looking for parking in the area, they went ahead and purchased some private land and said, "This is where we're going to do our parking." So it's ludicrous for these businesses to think they're going to come in and use public conservation lands, the parks and the forests, for these purposes. And I suggest that the county ask that this, that part of this study be eliminated from any sort of feasibility, because it's not going to be feasible, and it's just a waste of time. It's a waste of money, you know? Of course, it's not the county's money, it's the state's money, but we're all taxpayers here. And I take issue with that, because there's a whole process, and you cannot use these lands that were purchased with Preservation 2000 funds for anything other than the purpose for which they were acquired. That's for conservation and passive recreation, not for parking lots, not for any kind of transportation corridor. And I'd like to say, the original study that was done in 2015 started out in Greaton Beach State Park, and I'd like the county to realize that Greaton Beach State Park has a federal layer of protection over it called an otherwise, an OPA, an Otherwise Protected Area. And so that is administered by the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, so it's nearly impossible to go in and do anything in those parks other than what the purpose for which
Anyone have a question?
Is there anyone to speak on those comments? Otherwise, we'll be wasting a lot of money if what is, what you're saying is true. And if we've been here before and we've tried with the parks and it's never worked, then I don't know.
Commissioner, just looking at the scope of services, it doesn't identify that study. It does identify a DOT 2050 freight and logistics plan, a DOT five-year work plan, and Oklahoma Walton Transportation Plan for fiscal year 2017-2021, but it does not mention that particular one. I'm not saying they wouldn't look at it, but it is not within the actual scope of services.
Can we, yes, for comment? Come on, yes.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I think I've been to more of these meetings than a lot of you have, and I'll agree with Celeste. When you do stuff like this, you're changing your comp plan, because in 1996, you adopted a comp plan that says South Walton and Walton County had a certain concept that it wanted preserved. And most of the time, that logo behind you has been thrown out the window about pride, preservation, and conservation. You shouldn't be building roads through state parks for parking unless the parking is to get out and walk in the state park. Period, the end. You're changing the dynamics. Look at what's happened to land that's been dedicated to the public in Walton County? It's been abused its whole time. Drive down Mac Bayou Road, look at Mac Bayou Point Neighborhood. That was dedicated to the county for school. That wasn't what it was used for, even though we later paid $4 million for the same school site we sold for 400. Don't build roads through state parks. Don't ask to build roads through state parks. Don't do anything that changes preserving the water quality, the land quality, and most importantly, the quality of life. I'm amazed at the number of people in this county that devote, vote on decisions that they don't have to deal with. I mean, I mean, they don't drive in that area. What is wrong with telling the business from, yeah, I get some of businesses are historical, that's fine. What's wrong with telling a new business, "Sorry, we're out of parking. We're happy to have you in business. Buy your own dang parking and put it in your business plan. Don't finance it on the backs of the taxpayers or at the expense of our state forest." You know, what if somebody wanted to set up parking lot and dig up Park by the Springs? I bet some people north of the bay would have a freaking heart attack. Don't come down here and dig up our parks and our state lands. People bought long and hard, and y'all are just being gutless over some of this stuff. Tell these people, "No. Go get your own parking. Go get your own drainage. If you need a drainage area in your business plan or your neighborhood, if you've got to factor that into the cost, then you better do it, because that's called a business plan." But stop using public lands as a Band-Aid. We don't like it. Eventually, it's going to catch you one way or the other, whether it catches you from the city of South Walton telling you no, or you finally come to your own realization that that's enough. We need to protect this area, because right now, your bay is dying. And I'd love to submit a letter to you from somebody that worked for you for twenty-some years that acknowledges that the runoff is absolutely killing the bay. Parking, runoff, all these things are about preservation, so do the right thing. Why don't you try it one time?
Mr. Osborne?
Yeah.
Could you send me that letter?
No, it's a personal letter.
Well, I mean, you said you would like to submit it to us. I would just.
No, I said I'd like to tell you that one of your own wrote a letter about it, about how he was run out. And I'm not going to, if he gives me his permission, I'll call and ask him. I'll give you the letter. But for twenty-some years, he worked.
If possible, I would like to see it.
Why don't you call someone up? Why don't you read the record?
Max, would you like to come up, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. Commissioners, the contract that is before you is a study contract. There are a number of options on the table to consider how we deal with the increasing congestion on County Road 38, which is a jewel of our community and the centerpiece of our tourism. If we can't deal with traffic on 38, then we're going to kill the golden goose. This study helps us move forward with dealing with that congestion on 38. It considers all options and makes recommendations to this board for moving forward. Some of those options may not be feasible, but we at least need to consider what options are available to us, because we have to do something. So I would implore you to approve this contract, let us move forward with this study, and determine what the best course of action for this commission is to relieve congestion on County Road 38. There are no predetermined outcomes in this study. It is to consider all options, and we would appreciate the opportunity to do that in the benefit of our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? It's your pleasure, board. A motion to approve, approve with stipulations?
Well, as Mr. Carpenter said, this is just a study. This is not set in stone what we're going to do, but we do need all answers to a lot of questions on the problems of 38. I'm not for going through the public lands either and tearing the forest up or making parking places in the forests or on state parks, but we do, we do need information, and I think, I think this is, you know, a part of that information. So I make a motion, we accept this.
With stipulations and understanding that we want to not solely be on the parks and that we've got other avenues within this, within the study, because otherwise, it'll be a waste of money.
So is that a second?
No, wait a minute. Your motion is amended to his, so the question is, is your second in his motion, as he put it, or you, because you come back with something else in addition to what he had, so that's an amendment to?
Say your motion again, please.
I just make a motion that we approve this study. If you want to add those amendments to it, then you can make the motion. And I withdraw my motion.
Commissioner Anderson withdrew his motion. Would you like to make any motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue with this study as a feasibility study with the understanding that we are going to look at avenues, not just within public lands, that we are looking at other avenues, and taking into consideration past monies that we've spent and not gotten where we need to be for this 38 to move forward. I don't know how else to say it.
I'm going to second for discussion. This is just a study of anything that may be available to us for consideration at a future date and what actually we would take at that point in time. I agree, we shouldn't be trolley putting roads through the middle of the forest. I understand that. But there are, there has been some suggestions submitted to me from Celeste and a few others about bordering on the east side of the forest to get that connector back up to 98, which would have very minimal impact to the forest or adjoining properties. So, but those are things that this study should look for and find. To pull it at this stage of the game without fully vetting the whole process? To pull it at this stage of the game without fully vetting the whole process and seeing what to come back with. They may come back and say it's not feasible to do it for whatever reasons, so, but shouldn't we hear that first from the study before we start cutting it and chopping it, let it come on? Because we're going to make the final decision whether you go through the middle of the forest, or you go the other side, or you don't go anywhere at all except for some other route. So, that's my, my comment.
And, yeah, have we done a feasibility study on 38 before? Is this the first one since I'm the, since I'm the new commissioner?
It is not. It is not the first feasibility study. We, we.
We've done some traffic studies, probably, this, this is probably looking at things that we haven't looked at before. Madam Chair, maybe, I think what I'm hearing is we'd like approval with a message, let's move this thing forward, but the message is, we're very sensitive to the land, park lands and the state lands, so as you go through this process, understand that this board is not inclined to go do things that's going to impact those negatively. There may be some of it included in the study, but please focus on those things that have no impact on that. Would that be?
That's, thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you.
Chance, did you want to say something? Yes, you did. Sorry.
All right, Chance Powell, for the record, I did want to clarify that this study is, is primarily the use of autonomous vehicles on the existing facilities of 30A in South Walton and possibly new facilities that haven't been considered. There's had been other studies, most recent study done by Atkins that looked at alternate routes through the state forest, but this study isn't specifically about alternate routes through the state forest. Most primarily is autonomous vehicles, and they're used to help relieve congestion on 30A.
Okay, Commissioner Nippel, will you restate your motion?
I make a motion that we continue with the feasibility study with the considerations that Administrator Jones stated.
With the message attached to this board is very cognizant of the impacts of the forest and that the study should understand that before you even consider that, it's going to have to be something that makes a lot of sense for lack of a better term, but I think we deliver that message in with the approval.
Very good. Now, do we still have a second?
I don't really see where, I mean, this is just a study. I don't think any of us have, really have the stomach to go through the forest. I, I want to protect the forests as much as the next guy, and I don't want parking areas on the forest. But I don't see where this, approving this study, is going to change that, because this board is still going to have to decide the bottom line, what we're going to do. And just by approving this study does not mean we're approving going through the forest. And the people that I've talked to with the autonomous vehicle and Celeste, and I talked about this before, their first thing they talked to me was going through the forest. And I said, well, you know, I'm not sure I'm going to support that. But I've met with them since, and they've said, no, we, we've changed our mind on that. So, all this is saying is that we're going to do the study to see if this is a feasible way to relieve traffic on 38. That doesn't mean we're going to build parking lots in the forest. So, I, I don't see where we need a stipulation for the study.
So, there's no second? So, it's back on the table? Do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we get the study done as printed here on this plate.
Okay. Motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, the next item is a request to award RFQ 016-039 for Enviro, for Environmental Science Services and begin negotiations with a talk writing firm, which was Jones Edmonds. In the settlement agreement of the Thousand Friends of Florida in August of 2016, it provided that the county would do additional studies and work and assessments and monitoring of the Coastal Dew Lakes. So, this was a result of that settlement agreement. We issued an RFQ, and hopefully, we received three proposals. Jones Esmond, Edmonds was rated as the highest qualified responder, so we would, this approval would allow us to negotiate with Jones Edmonds for those services.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the audience, then? All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Madam Chair, we do have one update, if you would allow. Mr. Sunday's going to provide some information from the assessment of our rescue facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good morning, Commissioners. Just a quick update on the assessment of our, our rescue facilities. Chief Martin couldn't be with us this morning. His father passed away yesterday, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers. As I understand, on the update, the repairs to the Freeport Station are well underway. Staff, facilities maintenance staff and management staff have physically visited and inspected all 12 of the stations. A list has been compiled of the materials believed to be necessary to bring them up to par. The materials have been prized. However, we're awaiting measurements for flooring on four stations. So, according to Facilities Maintenance Management, we should have that and have you a comprehensive report back at the first meeting in January. It's my intent that between today and the next meeting that we, that I facilitate a meeting of the Safety, Health and Safety Committee, along with our rescue management and the leadership of, the union leadership, just to make sure that, you know, we're, we're addressing everything. We're all on the same sheet of music and addressing everything that needs to be addressed. So, with, with that meeting and, and the, what we're awaiting from Facilities Management, we'll have you a thorough report.
Any questions, comments?
What about the water quality at Gaskin? Did that ever get taken care of?
The last report I had on the water quality, that's been off and on. The last report I had was the quality was okay.
How does, how does that off and on? What do we got to do to fix that so it won't go on again?
Well, it depends on who you talk to. We've had discussions about replacing the well. Although, we're not, we're, we're not confident that that's going to, it's about a $15,000 to $20,000 investment, and we're not confident that that's going to address the problem. But that's probably going to be our, our next attempt at resolution.
Do we have a report from the Health Department saying that the water's okay now?
Last report that I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, could I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Sunday, man, and who's on the Safety and Health Committee?
Not prepared to give you the names, but the committee is, is comprised of members of our rescue management and members of the union.
Okay. Any other questions? No, ma'am. Thank you.
I can send you those names in an email.
Thank you. Jay Chesa?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We have two agenda items today, and Clay Atkins and TDC Council is going to handle those for us today, and then we also just, we have no updates, so I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Commissioners, the first item before you is a continuation of something the board previously addressed earlier this year, which was the updated guidelines and recommendation for operation of the TDC that came out of Dan Fenton's presentation. Number of things were suggested that we were approved previously, and then it needed to be approved over the year going forward. This is probably the second and the third of those steps. The last step will be something we're working with County Attorney Davis on, which is the revision of the TDC's ordinances and strategic plans, so we have more orderly fashion going forward. What presented to you today is an updated TDC structure and guidelines that outlines the appointment of seats. I will note that in the revised ones, on page two through three in the selection process, we left some dates from this year in there. Those will be dynamically updated during each selection process, so they won't always be the 2016 date. We wanted you to leave them in there to see what timeframe we're operating on. Basically, seats expire when they're appointed by the board at the end of December on a given term. So, the next set will be in 2018. The ones that you appointed, they will expire in 2020. Starting in October of those respective years, the board will take applications. A selection committee appointed by you will meet no later than, a month out from that day. At that point, they'll bring it back to you no later than your last meeting in December for appointment, and that's what will be the next agenda item, are the appointment of these seats. Effectively, what we've clarified, and I'll take questions rather than try to explain all of it for you, because I know you've all had an opportunity to review this at this point. We added some things and changed some things in the structure for TDC meetings. The old guidelines still reflected the quarterly meeting structure, which is the minimum required by Florida statute. We meet every two months. That's been in effect now for almost four years. And so, we wanted to reflect that that is, in fact, the intent of the board for the TDC to meet every other month rather than just quarterly, and as can be called more frequently, as needed by the board or the TDC director. We also added a condition in there. We've always wanted them to update us if they change employment, because that may affect their criteria or eligibility for a seat. But there's another issue that does come up, and that is if they relocate outside of Walton County and their permanent residence changes, they must be an elector of Walton County. So, for that to be the case, we want them to update us if they have a change in residency, and that just makes that an obligation of them to keep us in the loop, so that we don't have somebody who relocates unaware that that affects them, because they maintain their same employment, and then we have somebody serving. That's happened in our neighboring counties, when we were looking at other guideline structures, where they've had people who've held the same position for 15, 20 years. They've moved several times, in one case, actually moved outside of the county. One of our neighboring counties actually moved into Walton County, as a matter of fact, and didn't pick up on that for about six years. So, these are things that have come out of other counties' approaches. The largest change has come to the membership and terms. Basically, what we do is we eliminated some structure that we put in to back the seat guidelines back into accordance with state statute without additional requirements. Effectively, we had tried to divide in the past the owner-operator seats to serve separate categories of how many bed tax units we had. What the recommendation from Mr. Fenton was, and in working with the selection committee and Mr. Tusa, we felt it would be more beneficial and give the board more flexibility to not have defined buckets, so that you're not stuck with only one applicant from a given area at a given time. Allow the board to choose the best fit and the most qualified individual to serve on the TDC, regardless of the number of owners, and trust that both the selection committee and that the BCC itself would be sensitive to not overstacking the TDC with large bed tax collectors versus small bed tax collectors. The goal here is to give you the most flexibility. As it relates to non-owner operator seats, we clarified that preference would be given, but not a mandatory appointment, to persons who actively own or operate a tourist-related and serving business in Walton County, as opposed to someone who does not actively engage in the tourism industry. We felt that given the total number of applicants and number of people we've had apply over the last several cycles, that it would be beneficial for us to try to look to people who are engaged in restaurants, something other than lodging, of course, restaurants, retail, vending services, things that directly impacted by what the TDC does on a daily basis, to give them that opportunity, but not say that it must go to one of those. The only other change is we redefine seats two and three. The state statute, ladies and gentlemen, has always required that one of the elected official seats be reserved for the most populous municipality within the county or the subcounty district. Since we only collect the bed tax south of the bay, it applies to the subcounty, and we don't have a municipality south of the bay. But under our current guidelines, should incorporation in South Walton ever happen, we wouldn't have a seat reserved for them. So, what this says is, should a municipality ever be created in South Walton, be it 2017, be it 2045, seat two of this board would be designated by that board, subject to your appointment, and then seat three and four would go to either South Walton Fire District or the mosquito control district. In the event that there is no municipality south of the bay as it currently is, seat two can go to one of the fire districts and the mosquito control board, seat three would go to the other. So, what we've done is tried to embed that in there, so we knew that would be an option, but still give an opportunity, so you don't get two people from the same elected board. But I'll submit to any questions the board has for myself or Mr. Tusa, but we would expect the request you to approve that.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion, have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item would be the appointment of TD seats five, six, and eight, and then the confirmation of the reappointment of seat to Tim Norris, who was appointed by the mosquito control board. We would like you to confirm that appointment, even though they nominate. The applicants are in your packet, the selection committee and Mr. Tusa, Mr. Sunday, and Commissioner, or Chairman, excuse me, Jones, met along with myself in November to review the applications. The recommended names are Matt Hagan, Mark Hodgson, and Richard Veldman, and they would begin serving in January. The first meeting for them would be in the February TDC meeting.
I make a motion, we accept.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Any other questions, comments? Any comments from the audience?
Jim Bagby, B-A-G-B-Y, and I just want to correct, I think there are some great selections for the TDC. We've been trying to get Sandeston on there for a while, so I'm glad to see Mark there and the Howard Group. I want to, since it's part of the public record, I do want to correct one of the submissions. Mr. Veldman, in his submission states that he did not serve full term because he was a former director, the former director's request for a number of us to step down. That is untrue and inaccurate. The former council was dissolved by the Board of County Commissioners. That was the council that you may remember voted to approve the Taj Mahal, or voted to recommend you approve the Taj Mahal in the state forest. That was the council that voted to approve the $250,000 for the song that probably none of you have heard in the last four years. That is the council that voted to approve or failed to oversee the expenditures of the TDC, which cost us $130,000 in gift cards that were misused, now used. And that was the council that, I think a couple of you, I know at least one of you, watched the proceedings, because there was a toxic environment on that council prior to my getting there and after I got there, before you dissolved them toward your representative on that council. So, Mr. Veldman, I didn't ask anybody to step down. The Board of County Commissioners dissolved that council, because they didn't do their job. And so, I think he's a good man. I don't blame him for the toxic environment on that council, but his statement on his application is incorrect.
Anybody else? We have a motion? On the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you. Have a Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Happy New Year to you. Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a few items. The first item is in regard to Harris versus Walton County, case number 11, CA 1027, in the Circuit Court of Walton County. As you may or may not recall, Ms. Harris had sued Walton County for violating the Sunshine Law when the commission had approved a previous county attorney to hire counsel to assist her. The counsel was hired, however, the contract between the counsel and the county attorney was never approved by the actual commission. The payments to the counsel were approved by the commission, however, the trial court ruled that the failure by the commission to approve the actual contract was a violation of the Sunshine Law. That count was one of three brought by the plaintiff surrounding the purchase of the Chad Holly Road property by the county back in 2011. The other two counts were either dismissed by the court or by the plaintiff herself. Because she prevailed on one of the counts involving the Sunshine Law, she was entitled to have her attorney fees paid by the county. The trial court entered an order back on December 28th of 2015 granting the plaintiff's entitlement to her fees and costs. As to the amount of the fees, that hearing was actually not set until Monday, December 13th of 2016. In her pleadings to the court, Ms. Harris advised that she was seeking $223,306 in attorney fees and $12,225.84 in court costs, for a total of $235,000 plus dollars. At the hearing, well, let me back up. Walton County's expert on attorney fees, who we hired, indicated that she would testify that the plaintiff should receive $100,000. that the plaintiff should receive, and I'm rounding these numbers just for simplicity, that the plaintiff, Ms. Harris, should receive $166,000 in attorney fees and $6,000 in court costs, for a total of $172,000. That was our expert. At the hearing, at the beginning of the hearing and during his opening statement, the attorney for the plaintiff, Mr. Gates, announced that after reviewing the file and consulting with their expert, that they, who was present, by the way, for the hearing, that their expert would only be, would testify that she should only receive $168,200 in attorney fees and $12,000 in court costs, for a total of $180,200. Thus, the difference between the two groups of testimony, from the plaintiff's side and from the county's side, the county was going to testify that she was entitled to, plaintiff's expert was going to testify, county's expert was going to testify she was entitled to $172,000, the plaintiff's expert was going to testify she was entitled to $180,200. Obviously, the difference of $8,000 was a short distance, and given that, the attorneys representing the county and Ms. Harris stepped outside for a moment before the hearing started taking more testimony, or actually taking actual testimony, and agreed that they would, the plaintiffs and the defendants agreed that the defendant, being Walton County, would recommend to the Commission that the county pay $175,000, a total of court costs and attorney fees for this action. And again, that was an amount between what the plaintiff was going to seek and what the defendant, Walton County, was going to say that she was entitled to. There was a recommendation to you for $175,000. I was asked, I think this morning, if it's not approved, what would happen? Well, we'd go back to court, and that amount would have to be determined by the judge. Quite frankly, just to be blunt, that would probably cost us that $7,000 or $8,000 difference between what we said she was entitled to versus what the plaintiff said she was entitled to. So, it would be, quite frankly, I think a pound foolish not to approve it, because we would end up at the number, most likely, in costs for our fees, our expert to go back, and then, of course, we'd be on the hook for her fees for that next hearing, should you not approve this. So, it's our recommendation that you approve the $175,000.
Let me see if I understand. Out of the three counts, the judge said that she prevailed in one of the counts. Now, was there, like, time sheets?
Yes, sir.
Records presented showing that, you know, only a third of this time was?
Yes, sir. Our expert, we received the time sheets from the time the, the case started through the date of the hearing. Our expert went through them line by line and parsed out those which she felt was solely tied to the other two counts, and that was, in her opinion, a reduction of approximately $65,000.
Any other comments, questions from the Board? Any comments, questions from the audience?
Mark, this started, what, 2000, what year?
Yes, sir. 2011. Yes, sir.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept it.
My second. Motion, second. All in favor? Aye. Nay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Three a's and a nay.
The next item I have on the agenda is a request to approve a resolution correcting a Scrivener's error in Resolution 2016.
Three to one, three a's, one nay. Moving forward, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. 2016-57.
If you have other comments, come to the podium, please.
You want me to go forward? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I do want you to go forward.
Commissioners, back in August, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution when it decided to purchase some beachfront property in Dune Island. Frankly, we just had a Scrivener's error in that resolution we need to correct. The resolution refers to nature parks instead of nature centers. This amended resolution just corrects that Scrivener's error.
These two, go ahead, Commissioner. These two words are not part of properties for the Land Development Code. It won't change anything in our code, what we can do with the property, what we can't do.
No, ma'am. All it does is make the resolution consistent with the Florida statute.
Motion to approve.
My second. The motion, second. Any comments from the audience? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to authorize the county attorney, me, to sign an affidavit verifying that County, County Highway 30A, or that portion of the County Highway 30A at the intersection of 393 and 30A, that we are in the process of hoping to improve here in the very near future, that the state of Florida no longer has an interest in that property. As you may or may not know, at one point, the state of, County Road 30A was state, was a state road and not a county road. The contract requires us to ensure that the title to that strip of property that's being beaded and abandoned to the folks on the south side of 30A at that intersection, there's a, there would be a title issue as to the state's ownership interest, so we're required to sign an affidavit saying, at the time of the transfer, at the time of the abandonment, the county, oh, excuse me, the state of Florida doesn't have any interest in that property. It took us a long time to get to this point, quite frankly, because we couldn't find any document or any, anything in the county's record about when that transfer took place. After some investigation, we determined that it did take place, and it did take place in the mid-'70s, but obviously, because of retention schedules, those documents have long been gone. So, but just based on interviews with folks in the county government that were here and around at that time, that transfer took place sometime around '75, '76. So, I feel confident that I can sign an affidavit saying today, the state of Florida has no, no, no interest in the property underlying what was abandoned and what's been quit claimed to those folks.
Commissioner Nippa? The paper says 393, you said 393?
Sorry, I do that.
And then this, the other portion says 395. I just want to make sure.
It's 395. It's the intersection of Seagrove, yes, sir. I do 393 and 395 backwards in my head.
And 395 is due to be built, or to begin to be built. What is the projection for?
Right now, we're project, well, the contract calls for May, December of 2018, I believe, '17, but talking with Chance and some other folks, there's a chance, and I've talked to the attorney for the folks on the other side of this agreement, there's a chance we may have to extend it a little time. We're having some issues with designing just getting it done in that period of time, but right now, it's December 2017.
Okay, because we have a clause, no sooner than 10 years after the date of this agreement. So, what happens if it gets extended, extended?
The date of the agreement is the date it was approved by the Commission, just so we're clear. Yes, sir. And the agreement was approved by the Commission, I believe, in April of, March of 2016.
I got it. All right, all right. Any questions?
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Is it becomes this land was abandoned and given to the south folks there? Is that the reason we're having to do this? If we went all the way back to '75, '76, and it was always the county road, we could do what we want?
When we were negotiating the contract, Commissioner, these folks obviously want to have title insurance for that property, which they're going to receive. The title company, for whatever reason, and you know how title companies have become since the down, since the recession, they wanted some affidavit saying, at least that portion of the road, the state of Florida had no interest in. Took, as I said, it took a while for us to determine about when that happened, but they do not have an interest in that property.
Any other comments, questions? Any comments from the audience?
Good morning. My name is Dana Harmon. It's H-A-R-M-A-N. I'm a resident of Seagrove, full-time resident of Seagrove for a year, and didn't come in here for 15 years. And I just had a question. Oh, am I allowed to address questions, or just?
Sure, yeah, just address them to me.
Well, as far as the transfer of the state to the county for the right-of-way on County Road 30A, I called FDOT, and within 20 minutes, had made a public request for records, and within 48 hours, they sent me maps that were stamped when that conveyance occurred, and it says to Walton.
I'm sorry, yes, I've seen the maps. What I was looking for was a county document when we actually received.
Okay, well, I just want you to know, I know it's taken, I know it's taken a long time to happen, but just as a citizen who doesn't know anything about legal matters, I'm a veterinarian, within 20 minutes, I called the right person to get the ball rolling. Now, I didn't pursue past those maps, but it didn't take long to find out.
We've had maps.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just saying. My part. And as far as the contract that you're signing, the right-of-way acquisition contract, if you look over the contract, all of the items in paragraph two, with the exception of 2C5, must have been completed within 120 days of the execution of the agreement, or the agreement is to be voided. And that agreement was signed by Commissioner Commander on April 13th, 2016. So, now we're 258 days later to complete it, when the contract clearly states it needs to be completed within 120 days of initial signing, or it's considered null and void. And also, paragraph three of the contract states, timing is an important concern, and paragraph 13 clearly states, the parties agree that time is of the essence under this agreement. After consulting a lawyer, to help me interpret that, what this means, this phrasing prevents either party from claiming that is, that it is acceptable that the agreement conditions have not been met within the 120-day period. So, all parties agree, time is of the essence, we need to get this done in 120 days, it's been 258 days, and we're still talking about signing the affidavit. And the whole point of this being is that this, I think, because the contract is null and void, legally, I'm not a lawyer, how valid is this contract going to be? Because it's clearly null and void.
With all due respect to whatever lawyer you talk to, there's also a concept in contract law called impossibility of performance, and we had, quite frankly, it was impossible to perform that portion of that contract that we're trying to perform today in a 120-day period, because I could not sign or have somebody sign an affidavit without taking or being assured that the right-of-way, the county had, excuse me, the state had no interest in the right-of-way. Quite frankly, I didn't come to that assurance until sometime around November of this past year. So, with all due respect to him, this contract is valid. You performed, he, they have performed, it's time, this is just a simple matter of fixing something that was, it was required to be done in the contract, but something that needs to be done to finish out all the terms, so we can get started with the construction.
There was a second part of the contract, too, that was signed after the 120 days, and that's why I'm looking through my notes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so both, so there's been two parts that were signed afterward?
Yes.
Just so I have that out there. But again, and I will end quickly. Oops, and it did.
Take 30 more seconds, because Mark took a lot of your time.
Okay, I'm sorry. All I wanted to say was this is an opportunity for Walton County to find a better solution for the 38-395 intersection. The decision to not move the bike path to the south side of 30A for 10 years is an agreement that's controversial and warrants more discussion, and we don't even know what the start date of that 10 years really is. Is it April 13th? Is it March?
It's the date of contract.
So, it's not written clearly in the contract, as far as the last meeting discussed. I think it's time to start over with a new legal contract and work together to make it right for all parties involved, the citizens, what the Commission feels is right, what EFCO feels is right. Okay? Once you sign this, you've given up the right-of-way, you've given up the easement on the south side for underground utilities that they need to be done, for any other improvements that need to be done in the future, and if you do want to go back in 10 years, whenever that is, and put in a bike path on the south side, which I think everyone will agree needs to be done, you've lost your ability to use that easement and to change that road at all. There's no plan for that right now.
Thank you.
I think that all needs to be thought out. Thank you. Sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chance? Is Chance still here? Yes, Chance, would you kind of give us an update of the intersection and how the contract?
But basically, I guess we, what, did your question? There is, there is other avenues to change the bike path to the south side before 10 years, if I'm correct.
I think that's a question from Mark, maybe.
Yes, sir. There is a health and safety out in the contract, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a time limit on that, or is, I mean, could it be tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, most likely, in the contract.
That's mainly what I want. And as far as getting started, I know you and I talked, and you said there was a delay because of moving utilities.
That's correct.
What is your best estimate to get?
I know that, right now, we're about 60% set plans. Atkins is working on them. We've had a good bit of conflicts with underground stormwater requirements, the conveyance and treatment portion of the project interfering with some of the old utilities there in Seagrove. As you may or may not know, that area of Seagrove has some old sewer, gravity-collected sewer, which is very hard to work around, almost impossible to relocate without a major overhaul of the system. So, Atkins is working around those utility conflicts now. We're still in the development plans of working on maintenance and traffic plans for the construction of the project, and, you know, given the, given the schedules that we're having to work with, you know, utility companies are really going to have to work alongside our construction efforts, making utility relocates. At the same time, we are hoping we are going to be able to make some of those utility relocates this winter, and then get under construction with the project fall of 2017. And that's, that's not really going to be possible, given the fact that the utility companies are so wrapped up in other utility efforts now, both by the county and by the state projects that we've got going on. So, the, I'm fearful that the project will not be able to be built off-season. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure that we will not be able to build that project during the off-season, considering the off-season being Labor Day to spring break. It's just going to be too large of a project to get built in that, in that timeframe. So, we're either going to have to go back and look at other opportunities to maybe phase the project to limit impacts, or look at other opportunities for maintenance of traffic, and maybe some of the other streets within Seagrove. It's going to be, it's going to be a challenging effort, some things that we're going to need to tackle early in 2017 with some public meetings to get everybody's involvement on how the project will be built and limit the impacts to the Seagrove area there.
Yeah, because the traffic's already backed up to come, come any given day, and I just, it would be a nightmare to, yeah, unless we have an alternative to this intersection, to divert traffic while it's being constructed, so, thank you.
That is by far the busiest county intersection that we have during the season. When you, and when you complicate that with the number of pedestrians that's coming through there, it's going to be quite challenging if we have to go through construction efforts outside of the quote-unquote off-season.
Okay, I believe there was someone, thank you, Chance.
So, I, just a second. I agree that the bike path needs to be located on the south side of the road. That's, I'm just afraid with the, even with the intersection, with the bike path being on the north side of the road, it's still going, it's not going to be enough to make a huge difference. And I hope we can get that bike path on the south side as soon as we can. I mean, it's, you know, I know we're going to have a light, but still, it's, that's one of the biggest problems right there, in my opinion.
I'm hoping that early 2017, Atkins is going to be able to present to us some maintenance of traffic plans, and obviously, those maintenance of traffic plans are going to have to include what we're going to do with pedestrians during that time. So, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with and what we can, what we can figure out.
Thank you, Chance.
Thank you.
I believe there was a gentleman back here. Did you want to speak, sir? With us, yes, yes, sir. Come up, please. Say your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Fred Triker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R. I live in Seagrove Beach, and I wanted to address the safety issue, but I think I just, I wasn't really clear on what I just heard. It sounded like people are saying that we can move the bike path to the south before the 10 years.
There is an out, it's not, and I have it read in the last couple, which if there's a.
I've got it right here. It says.
If there's an out, I understand.
If there's a, if there's a safety issue, then you can do something, but no sooner than 10 years after the date of this agreement.
Yeah, the way, yes, sir. I understand what it says, but we've taken that to believe, and frankly, I think the negotiations were that if there's a health and safety issue.
I'm sorry, that's not what it says.
We'll deal with it if we need to, but that's my understanding.
How, how can you assure us?
Well, we always have police power, and one of the things people just don't understand is, yes, contracts say what they do with the county, but we always have police power. If there's a health and safety issue, we can protect you.
Okay. Well, I, first of all, I think it is a very serious safety issue, and I agree with what Mr. Anderson just said. Bike path needs to be moved to the south, and I'd like to see it happen before tour season. And unfortunately, we got this meeting today, 9:00 in the morning, right after the Christmas holidays, there's people that would like to come and speak to that. holidays, there's people that would like to come and speak to that issue, that can't be here. So, I don't think that's appropriate. So, I guess, you know, first of all, I would suggest maybe you don't vote on this issue today. Give the people a chance. There is a recognition, I think, on the part of the community, that things have changed since the vote was taken to go ahead with this land stock agreement. A lot of things have changed. The Atkins Traffic Study came out with a strong recommendation to move the bike path. Planning Commission recommended it at a meeting here before you recently. And we got members of the board actually coming out and saying it has to be moved. So, it's a very important issue, and I don't think you should vote on this today, because that is the last step, that you need to go ahead and start swapping land. When that happens, you know, I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to move the bike path the way we really need to do it. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Davis, would it be a problem to move this to the next meeting in the south end?
No, sir, we're outside the 120 days that won't matter, one way or the other.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we do that.
I second.
Thank you.
All right. We've had multiple discussions, I know the two new board members not, but we've had multiple public comment sections concerning this intersection. And there was a discussion as to whether it be on the north side or the south side. The south side has 19 conflict points along that path. I don't know if y'all are aware of that or not. Because every house that enters on the south side has got to cross that bike path to get to 38. 19 conflict points, that concerns me, especially if you kept it on the north where it's presently designed to be. You bring it up to a controlled pedestrian, traffic-controlled device. That is a safer, in my opinion, crossing from one side to the other, than taking a chance of somebody wanting to run it down that path and get backed over by a car coming out. So, if there's a, I don't know, I think we're just go ahead and sign the affidavit, and go from there.
The, the contract was already, the agreement was already decided by a pass board, a BCC board. So, what we're trying to do today is sign this last...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if the board chose not to sign this last, would that void the contract?
We would have to, my guess is, we would have to go back to the EBSCO, because all the deeds, now, we've done the abandonment as required, but all the deeds have been exchanged. We're holding a mnispro pending the completion of the construction. We would have to go back to EBSCO and talk about renegotiating, or, we'd have to go back to EBSCO, and we may possibly end that, end up back in court on some sort of declaratory judgment action to determine whether the terms are still effective or not, to take a win.
But not if we just postpone it till...
No, sir, no, if we just postpone it, we could...
So, we have a motion in a second to postpone it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And...
Do you want it on the next meeting? Is that...
Yes.
I will have it there. Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is number 24. We've had a request from the Design Review Board to allow staff to begin the process of adding some native vegetative plants to the Chapter 13 Design Review Forwarder Standards. During the course of many Design Review Board meetings, it's become apparent there are some native plants that just simply are not on the list and need to be added. So, we're asking your permission to start the process to add those plants.
This list that you provided to us here, so, black print, blue print, red print, which one are we supposed to be...
Well, let's see it, answer that question, if she's still in the room, there she is.
Commissioner Chapman, I'm not sure which attachment you're looking at.
I'll do it.
The blue are additions, the red are deletions, and then black is what we already have in the list. But there should also be in your packet a draft of an ordinance showing the changes as well, with strike-through and underline. And if you remember, the board adopted some changes and removed several plants from the plant list that were non-native, and the DRB is just asking to add these species that are native, so there's a little bit more variety for people who are developing on 98 to choose from. And just, you know, this will go to the Planning Commission, and then back to you guys for two hearings before adoption.
Any other comments, comments from the audience? Could have a motion to accept these changes?
No, just, no, I'm sorry, just your request to allow staff to go forward with the draft and what's necessary to get the changes.
All right, so we don't need a motion, all right.
Oh, no, no, yeah, we do.
We need a motion to allow staff to go forward. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And the next item, Commissioners, is a similar request, is to allow the DR, the Design Review Board to hold up to three workshops to discuss and consider proposed changes to the signage and lighting provisions of Chapter 13. Specifically, on signage, it's a question of new materials that have come on the market since Chapter 13 was last amended. We get questions all the time at DRB, "Well, can I use this?" Well, no, it's not allowed in Chapter 13. So, they want to have a few workshops to consider that. And lighting is, again, same thing, there's been a lot of changes in lighting in the last number of years, and they'd like an opportunity to review those changes in the market and see what's available, that they could, they could not want to add to Chapter 13. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Any comments from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Tony Anderson, do you have any comments to the audience?
No, none, just...
Commissioner Melanie Nippa?
Yes. With regard to number, I don't know if I need to reopen it, but the approval of the consent agenda number four on the NOPC, when we had questions regarding the amount of time, I'm not sure if I'm, I need to reopen that, or, may I just ask a question?
You could certainly ask a question, yes, ma'am.
Right. In the Land Development Code, is there a date or time that the applicant has time to give notice? Because that seems to be, that was a very big issue, and I would just like to know where we, as a county, are going to go forward if, if there is a very specific time, and we've got this paperwork that was shown, is there anything in the Land Development Code that has a date of a specific time?
And forgive me for not knowing it off the top of my head, but there are a number, there is a time period that's required. And I've obviously got this now from Mr. Osborne. I'll take a look at the affidavit, and I'll get you a report back before the next meeting. The hearing on the NOPC is not scheduled until November, January 30th, so I'll have a report back to you on the notice issue that's been raised.
And will anything from that issue change the date, or have an effect on the date that we've approved for the...
I can't tell you today if that's the case. I simply can't do it.
But you'll get back with me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Chapman?
Love you. Happy New Year to all of you. Enjoy the rest of your holidays, and look forward to some exciting times in 2017. You know, some of my goals are to see the water sewer on 331, to see jobs come to our county, so, lot in store, so, enjoy your holiday. Any citizen, uh, citizen request, Robert Rayburn, is he here?
Yes, hello, Robert Raymond, R-A-Y-M-O-N-T. I'm coming on, hey, I'm coming on behalf of Dalton Drive. We have had some back and forth, as you know, and the proposed solution, the, I'm sorry, the unmaintained portion of the road where Dalton connects to 38, if that is built out, is going to put commercial through traffic through our residential street, which is deeded private residential street. The previous group of individuals who have the county maintain a portion of it, gave rights to the county, but I looked up the state law after the last meeting, and apparently the unmaintained portion is in question. To try to bring it into it, I have a solution that I think is worth discussing, which is to block below the commercial traffic, Dalton Drive to bicycle pedestrian access, which will cut down on the requirements for beach parking, encourage the use of pedestrian, bicycle traffic, and reduce the traffic on 38, which is already going to be dramatically increased by new condo development, I think. I'm not sure the number of units that are going to be almost directly across from Dalton. So, the traffic would be reduced, encourage pedestrian, bicycle traffic, wouldn't interfere with whatever private property residential rights that might be there for the unmaintained portion, and bring it in to the potential issues that would arise from that down the road. Thank you. And any questions, or anything that anyone may have? I'm asking that you guys, the board, respectfully approve the change below the commercial development, whether it's the one proposed, or one in the future, that would allow Dalton Drive to remain pedestrian or bicycle only. We have no sidewalk, it's a sand, hardened sand road, so, I think it's a realistic solution.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Yes. I would suggest we have him contact with our Public Works engineers and talk about it, let's look at total, analyze the whole road bed going through there from 38 all the way down. I think there's still some question as to, do we have prescriptive rights along that entire road, or part of the road? We've had comments from some that doesn't want us to do anything out there, and then we have others that say they do want us to do something. So, we got to figure out what y'all want.
Well, I'm representing the bulk of the residents, 23-plus, well, 23 out of...
How many?
Exactly.
About 100%?
It's over 50. I would say it's probably 60, 70%, and the only reason is because we can't reach some of them. We've had 100% agreement, but based on the new facts that there is county maintained portion rights vested to the county through state, state law, which also states that it only maintain, it's the maintained portion that grants rights to the county. So, there's certainly a pretty large question for the unmaintained part of Dalton Drive. And so, as a group, we're trying to come together to a solution without dragging it forward, which would be just to keep below the commercial proposed or future developments for pedestrian or bicycle traffic. And that's supported by, exact number, I couldn't say, because every time we find somebody new, there, everyone is in agreement. We've had no one that is in disagreement with any of the statements.
Does the present county maintain section go from along Dalton Drive all the way up to Center Avenue, and then from Center Avenue continue north is...
Um, it goes a little above Center, it does not connect to 38. I don't know the feet, there's a certain amount of feet that I don't know off the top...
What you submitted to us, there's a...
That's the, yeah, the proposed, where we would have the block, which above that towards 38 is going to be commercial and/or multifamily.
This section here, north of this line you put on...
That is, that is mostly unmaintained, I don't know the exact, you know...
It belongs to somebody, either all the property owners, as I've been told, have a vested right...
We do, yes, going back to the 70s.
Is there any position of the homeowners in there, that they're going to take care of securing that and developing it into a pedestrian bike path, or whatever?
Well, we, yes, we do have commitment to fund any, as well as the current applicant, once it's approved. I'm sure they would want it, because it's obviously going to create more retail traffic, to have foot traffic versus automobile traffic. But we do have commitments to fund any, you know, we're already, we have money coming, and it will be directed towards funding blockades to create this, or other purposes.
Again, I would still suggest that staff, how it works, get with Mr. Raymond, and develop whatever y'all talking about, and bring it back, because I don't know everything that y'all may have...
The only issue that would come up from that is, there's a proposed vote that's going to happen for development that would potentially cause this to be unavailable. We have, I don't, we have Chance that may agree or disagree, and I gave him kind of the, what we're proposing in advance, so he may have a negative comment, positive, I'm not sure, but I think we've gone...
The options haven't been provided to us, so we, I'm not...
No, that's what, that's what I'm saying, yes.
But you know, I'm not in a position to take a vote one way or the other until I've had the...
Exactly, yes, I realize that.
Not a vote today, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, if we do not vote today, is there a delay in the proposed development that could be held off due to this?
No.
No. No. Okay.
Okay, so you'll, so you'll get with, Chance, so does Chance have all the information already?
He, I'm, well, we've met previously, so I'm not sure how he feels about this, he obviously could have...
Okay, so we'll, so Chance will get it to us next week, and we'll look at it.
Okay.
All the information.
All right. Well, you, or you can ask him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments of anything not on the agenda? Yes, Ms. Harris?
I guess y'all, no, your video's not working today, right? Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because that's why I was filming, and I didn't want anybody to think I thought y'all did anything wrong with the video, I just wanted you to know I was filming. Ms. Jones, this county has spent $700,000, close to, or maybe a little above, on my lawsuit, which I offered to settle for zero, just to admit all contracts would come before the public in the future. Obviously, you and Mr. Chapman voted no on that, so therefore...
What are you talking about?
When it went to executive session, to settle for nothing, there was a no vote. So, y'all decided to continue right on, spending the county's money. You spent 500 and something thousand dollars with Bill Warner's firm, on something you could have settled for nothing. Now, you're paying me 100 and something thousand. Y'all, and in my first lawsuit, on public records, you paid about 500 and something in attorney fees, and you had to pay me more. So, all together, on your personal vendetta with me, you've spent a million dollars of county money. As bad as we need drainage, you let your personal vendetta spend other people's money, when you could have saved this county a lot of money and used it for drainage and roads, and just learned to do the right thing.
Ms. Harris, I don't have a personal vendetta with you. I voted, I voted my conscience, I voted that a judge, if you ever got a penny, the judge would award it to you.
You know what?
That's when I voted.
And you know what? We wanted to try the case. We were there, we were in court, and we had both made own statements. But it was your attorney who said, "Can we take a 15-minute break and go out in the hall?" We were flabbergasted. You came in with one offer, and we said, "No, we want to go on to court." But no, the county didn't want to go to court. It was your attorney Warner, and it was your attorney Mark Davis, who came back in the courtroom and asked to see Matt, and wanted to settle. It wasn't me.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Have a happy New Year. Wayne Dice? Wayne, you're on.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two items on the agenda. The first item is to accept the resignation of Mrs. Nina McCaslin-Horn from the Planning Commission as a District Five representative.
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion to accept. Any comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed, like, sign.
And the last item is a quads judicial item, but it's a continuance.
Anyone, anyone who participates testifying on the quads judicial item, please stand and raise your right hand. I suspect it's only going to be him or Matt. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
The last item is a request to continue until the January 10th, 2017, meeting. It is a South Walton Business Center, lots 11 through 13 replant. They have not gotten all the necessary signatures for the plant, and so that is why it's being continued.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, we have second. Motion second to continue to January 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign.
Aye.
That's all we have.
Okay, motion is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It was set separately, so we can adjourn and go into-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Re-adjourn.
And then we'll have the executive-